I'm the moderator. During the and you can go again. So you have to bear this. My first time ever in public. I've forced a thing. Uh, so we need to have, these are the sort of the work card. You need to have 50 people there to make any local counts or they can avoid it. Please don't go. Um, there's a mic set up here. If you have any comments, like to make them up to the mic again. And according to the manual I read, the supposed to address your questions to the moderator. I will relay it in real terms. If they hear you, they can respond. You're supposed to make it look like. All right. Any questions about this other than that? All right. We already elected moderator. Article two was to elect the two members to the select board, and we did. For selectmen, John McCauley got sixty-five votes and was elected. Jeff Wood got a big nine votes and was elected, and there was a scattered write-in vote. Uh, for school board, one member, Captain Newby, was elected with sixty-three votes. And her school district trustee, Anthony Smith, got sixty-six votes. So there they are, they're all in. Here you get to come up and swear. Yeah. You're gonna be sworn in, don't swear.
Again, you got four votes from anybody. You can swear if it's going to be more than two. Like you play it through the state, it's not so stupid. They're out of hand and you play it where the like play the experience. Maybe you can make it be one of the three. Three years time, you gave me a question. I mean, three or four. Thank you.
It's supposed to be your name.
I found words. My face, I can't say it. Since Carol. I don't know how to say it, but maybe you get dark. But I'm really late. Three, I'm gonna miss a second. First, exactly. They call it the most appropriate in the law of the state.
I want to be where it's worth it. And takes it. It is looking there. He's wrong. They are seeing that. You can remember to cover the main circle. It's just on the turn. Are you still coming? They.
Seven.
Yeah. It's.
It's. Where it's. There. You're all of us. What else about? Or general. There's a tiny thing.
All right, that's done. This is our campaigning by everyone. Um. Generally, when we do this, we go through and we introduce the motions in a positive fashion and accept them, and then we discuss it. So if Bill stands up and makes a positive motion, someone will second it, and then we can debate it. We can change it. It's not necessarily their meaning, but their reading. So don't yell at it. Ready? Article three, see if non-voters shall be allowed when recognized to speak during the 2023 annual town meeting. Okay, that's good. Um, any discussion of the article? Hearing none, we move on to vote. All those in favor of passing article three? All those opposed? Hearing none, I'd say article three passes. Article four. The rest of these articles, as they get longer and longer and longer, and I'm gonna suggest that you, when I have for it, you give me consensus not to read the whole thing. Um, the short ones we'll deal with for now, but I'm planning to just read the main body. If you have any questions, if you want me to continue reading anything, feel free to shout out, and I'll do it. So there we go. Article four, show the ordinance dated May 2nd, 2023, entitled Town of Mount Desert Alewhite Ordinance be enacted. The ordinance reads, in its entirety, regulations for the taking of alewites and blueback hearing shall be as follows. For the year July twenty-one, July one, 2023, through June thirty, 2024, there shall be no taking of alewites and blackback hearing in the town of Mount Desert. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any discussion of the alewhite ordinance? Hearing none, I call it up for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article four passes. Article five, shall the northern state in May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the town of Mount Desert harbor ordinance be enacted? Do you want me to read it? Don't. Uh, if everybody's happy, I'm happy to take your consensus consent and not read the whole article to you. Is that acceptable to have anybody? Anybody, does anybody object? All right.
Can you just read the episode?
Oh, um, that's a good idea. I will read the notes at the bottom that explains what you just allowed me not to read. These amendments to the harbor orders are to bring the definition of resident into line with state statute thirty-eight MRS eleven dash one and to provide better oversight for moorings located outside the harbors of the town. Now, has anyone discussed it? Oh, why don't you? Now would be like to discuss it. Hearing nothing, I'd say we vote. All those in favor? All opposed? All right, article five passes. Article six. Shall, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle ordinance regulating the building and street numbering in the town of Mount Desert be enacted? And it's mostly all a strikeout. Explanatory note, this amendment eliminates the sunset provision in the ordinance to be consistent with elements of the town charter dated May second, 2022 referendum election. Um, any discussion? Does anybody need an explanation of fundback clause? We have about ten of these coming up. To give a good explanation of the sunset. This is the best part of the job, as I think.
Okay, so basically the sunset plot is something that in the charter, the old charter, put a limit, a time limit on each of the ordinances so, so that you had to revoke them every time they expire. And we talked to our attorneys in the NMA, and they said that is highly unusual and inappropriate that we do move the sunset clauses. Orders so that we don't have to revoke that you don't need to. When they expire, so they don't expire, but they are reviewed by the charter every five years. So if there's any recommended changes, the passing of the meeting, then they would be totally. Does that help?
All right. Don't play with that. Article six. Article five, we did. Let me discuss, we got the explanation. Any other discussion of the article? All those in favor? All those. Article five passes. Article six, so an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitled ordinance regulating the building and street numbering in the town of Mount Desert be enacted. Another sunset provision nomination. Any second? And we're gonna. Right, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll for a vote. All those in favor of article six? All those opposed? Article seven, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the town of Mount Desert be enacted? Once again, this is, um, eliminating the sunset provision. Any discussion about the dog organs? All those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, I'd say that it passes. Article eight, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the town of Mount Desert harbor ordinance be enacted? Any discussion of this? All those in favor? Both of them? Article one, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle town of Mount Desert public water supply protection ordinance be enacted? Well, this amendment eliminates the sunset provision. Be consistent with amendments to the town charter dated May second, 2022 referendum. Oh, sorry about that. Be able to replace the no swimming and living in motor vehicle access to Great Bottom. Is that better? All right. Now we can read that again. So an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the town of Mount Desert public road acceptance ordinance be enacted. This amendment eliminates sunset provision. Be consistent with amendments to the town charter dated May second, 2022. Thank you. Here's where I'll be happy. Let's go back. Discussion. Should we vote on it? All of you favorite? All those opposed? Say that it passes. Now we'll do our own thing. So an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the town of Mount Desert public road acceptance ordinance be enacted. This amendment eliminates sunset provision in the ordinance to be consistent with the town charter dated May second, 2022 referendum election. Any discussion of article ten? All those in favor of article ten? Any opposition? Yes, I, your theme. Article eleven, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle road wake water treatment support program ordinance of the town of Mount Desert be enacted? This amendment eliminates sunset provision in the ordinance to be consistent with the amendments to the town charter. Any discussion? All those in favor? Better. Any opposition? Article eleven passes. Article twelve, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle solid waste ordinance of the town of Mount Desert be enacted? This is moving to the sunset provision in the ordinance to be consistent with the town charter dated May second, 2022. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposition? Article twelve passes. Article thirteen, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle town of Mount Desert use of public places ordinance be enacted? This amendment eliminates the sunset provision in the ordinance to be consistent with amendments to the town charter dated May second, 2022 referendum election. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposition? Right, article thirteen passes. Article fourteen, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance regarding lots within the virtual village commercial district in the village of North Star be enacted as set forth below. This amendment amends section three point five, put no P, clarify that the minimum lot size, lot size of one square, one thousand square may only apply to lots within the village of North Star. Do you want me to read through the whole thing or? If there's more additions in the P, they add five letters. Any discussion of this? These are mostly loser tweets. All those in favor passing article fourteen? Any opposition? Hearing none, article fourteen passed. Article fifteen, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance to change the land use district designation of DAX map three lot O two six and map O three lot O seven, O two seven, be enacted as set forth below. The circuit changes DAX map O three lot twenty-six and three lot twenty-seven, shoreline residential two, the residential two. Any questions or discussion?
Why not? Any move?
There's some going the other way. Answer man.
Also, I'm trying to consult for the town. Uh, I appreciate everything you're speaking. Uh, this was a request, requested some change of the property owners of these lots. Actually, those lots are outside of it. And. So. Has given only districts. They're called shoreline industries. So this, this particular lot effect, these lots are outside. So, yeah. If you see the map. It's good. Yeah, the DAP, the DAP is the form of these lots with not. On the lot. All of them are in that. There may be other lots that are designated that way. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Yeah, so we identified, yes, yeah.
Katie.
Yeah, actually, that. Those lots right next to the park within, partially within the shore. So if you read the, the state's shoreline zoning requirements, it deals with lots that are either partially or fully located in the shoreline zone. That's the reason. Yeah, it's confusing. The other questions have been answered. Yes, we can. There's no way to do that. No, not necessarily. I think that the shoreline zone, um, standards and the ordinance deal with that area. And we're sort of working through that process right now and try to figure out. Uh, at one point in the past, um, shoreline zoning was a separate ordinance, and then it was applied into one ordinance. Some of this stuff is actually reflected. Sort of that. But I don't think that maps are in step. I think we just need to figure out works. Sometimes per lot basis and sometimes as a vehicle work. Process coming. Good.
Any more questions, discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article fifteen passes. Article sixteen, shall an ordinance dated May two, 2023, entitle amendments to land use zoning ordinance to clarify the dimensional requirements for one family and two family dwellings be enacted as set forth below. This war in article amendment, the loser, section six B eleven dot three two, to clarify that dimensional standard for a duplex are not doubled until a second duplex structure is added. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd call it to vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article sixteen passes. Article seventeen, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance to add residential storage building slash shed is permitted use in section three point four be enacted as set forth below. This article adds residential storage building sheds as allowed use so that the owner of the property can build these structures without being tied to residential dwelling gaming. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposition? Article seventeen passes. Article eighteen, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning to remove the air landing sites be enacted as set forth below. This article removed the air landing sites in section six B in the ordinance. Katie? The landing strip. Running. Yeah. There is real effect because there are no landing strips in the town. We getting old again.
Good question. Uh, air landing strips are not currently allowed. They would not be allowed. This actually just eliminates the, the standard in the ordinance that if the planning made work of the view that there's a, there's a section in the ordinance that is. So it's, uh. Section here. So these are under the specific performance standards in the order. So if they were allowed, we'd have to go with the allowed use system. To say, hey, I'd like to do an air landing strip. Is this an allowed use? It isn't currently allowed use. This is just, there's a standard in the ordinance. It's not responding. So it doesn't, it doesn't like eliminate you with this kind of thing. Yes.
All.
Awesome. I think that would be something that would fall within that. Yes, if you wanted to do it sort of as a private property, bad prompt tabs and that would fall for that guy. But we've also had this discussion with working. Loser, like play, it doesn't.
Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes. Article nineteen, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance regarding the definition of marina and expansion of use be enacted as set forth below. The article adds language to the definitions for marinas and expansion of use to clarify that the harbor master regulates moorings and that an expansion of use does not include adding moorings. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, call it to the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article nineteen passes. Article twenty, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to land use northern and northern ordinance to amend the deadline for establishment of use be enacted as set forth below. This article changes the timeframe for establishment of use for traditionally used for twelve months to twenty-four minutes. Questions, discussion? Call. What do you mean? You have to, you have to show you something, the thing within twelve months to continue your bidding. Right, and this is making it twenty minutes. That's. Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposition? Article twenty passes. Article twenty-one, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance to correct the date for when a lot was to be created. For purposes of applying the access provisions in six B dot eleven two to be enacted as set forth below. This article makes a housekeeping correction to date when a lot was created, purposes of applying the access provisions, provisions in six B eleven dash two. Questions? We read it. Um, all those in favor? Article, all those opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance to clarify where the setback is measured from a road or right of way be enacted as set forth below. This article clarifies where a road setback is measured from. Questions or queries? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three, shall the, shall an ordinance dated May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance regarding the footprint limitation for principal and accessory structures in the shoreline zone be enacted as set forth below. This article provides a housekeeping change to make local ordinance consistent with shoreline zoning by increasing the footprint limitation for principal and accessory structures in the shoreline zone from fifteen percent to twenty percent, which is more consistent with the state guidelines. Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-three. Sorry, you're doing your business work here. Article twenty-four, shall an ordinance entitled May second, 2023, entitle amendments to the land use zoning ordinance to allow exceptions to the height limitations consisting with the state shoreline zoning laws be enacted as set forth below. This article allows an exception to height is measured when a structure is located within an area of special flood hazard. Any questions or queries? All those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, article twenty-four passes. Gifts, article twenty-five, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept conditional gifts. Unconditional, you don't want me to read the numbers, MRS A thirty dash A five, six, five, four. Unconditional gifts, MRS A thirty dash A, six, five, 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 six, five, five. Equipment seeds from sale acquire equipment. Equipment seized from sale of fire equipment funds on behalf of the municipal fire department. It is understood that any funds received will be placed in the fire equipment reserve. Any questions about this? Hearing none. All those in favor are article twenty-five? All those opposed? Hearing none. Article twenty-five passes. We're gonna pause. We're gonna pause here to give the spirit of America award. The S is black. I didn't see anything. The town of Mount Desert, twenty twenty-three Spirit of America Award tribute is to Ellen Tappus. Dedicated of two. Dedicated of two to the community. She loved and made better through her and she and through her art, she shared beauty with us all. To her to accept it. Earth is presenting.
Your mother meant so much to this town. This town meant so much to you. We miss you a lot.
Article twenty-six, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease a portion of the so-called visitor center at the Northeast River Marina to the ticket booth operators for a term of one year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. Under such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen, in its sole discretion needs to be the best interest of the town. Any discussion of article twenty-six? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-six passes. Article twenty-seven, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease a portion of the so-called visitor center at the Northeast River Marina to the Mount Desert Chamber of Commerce for a term of one year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. Under such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen, in its sole discretion needs to be in the best interest of the town. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-seven passes. Article twenty-eight, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a ten-year lease with the town of Cranberry Island for a hundred and twenty-three parking spaces in the town office municipal parking lot, under terms and condition the board needs advice. A copy of these lease documents will be on file at the town office and available for public inspection no less than seven days prior to the town meeting, and that copy shall be certified as active by the town court. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-eight passes. Article twenty-nine, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will authorize the board of selectmen to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the neighborhood house twelve each for management and maintenance of the municipal school equal for a term of one year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. Under such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen, in its sole discretion needs to be deemed to be in the best interest of the towns. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-nine passes. Article thirty. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to sell a surplus emergency standby cooler eighty kilowatt generator to the certain island regional school district for a loom sum cost of twelve thousand five hundred dollars on an as-is where it faces said generator being the same generator that was leased by the N D I I school from town for one dollar in September, twenty twenty-two, and is presently in place and in use at the high school with said lease scheduled to terminate towards twenty twenty-three and further to authorize the board of selectmen or their designated to execute any execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to accomplish this sale. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article thirty passes. Article thirty-one. So the voters of the town of Mount Desert authorize the select board to negotiate and complete the sale of the twenty thirteen ambulance received by the town by gift of the Northeast River Ambulance Service on or about April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two by returning into Northeast for the ambulance service for one dollar pursuant to the term of the gift remiss by which N H A S has donated into the. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article thirty-one passes. We're gonna get into a series of long ones and if I would like general consensus that it's okay to just read the beginning of it and not go through the whole thing. If anybody objects at any time and wants me to read the whole thing, feel free to ask. Article thirty-two. To see if the town of Mount Desert will vote to accept Patterson Hill Road exclusive of Love Outway serving the Patterson Hills subdivision as it is defined below and subject to the conditions set forth. Feeling good with me not reading it? You need to sort of say yay loudly. Article thirty-two, discussion of any kind? Hearing none. You're still reading harder. All those in favor? Any opposition? Article thirty-two passes. Article thirty-three is also a rather long article. To see if the town of Mount Desert will vote to accept the existing private sanitary sewer collection and conveyance system serving the Patterson Hills subdivision as the same is defined below and subject to the set forth below. Any discussion? Yeah. Appendix D page fifty-six. Yeah. Thank you. Does anybody need further explanation of this? Because we can get it. Okay, the map does help. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor are article thirty-three? All those opposed? Article thirty-three passes. Article thirty-four, I'll read you the whole one of this. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will amend the policy adopted March nineteen eighty-six and amended May twenty-ten and May third, twenty sixteen and titled town of Mount Desert investment policy policy as described and deleted through strike-through markings, see appendix E pages fifty-seven to fifty-nine. Any discussion or questions? Yeah.
Page fifty-nine. Captain Beatty. He said. Um, someone explain the differences of this and why the ten and.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Um, so environmental sustainability funds essentially is responsive to the town's declaration of climate emergency. It started in the investment committee talking about ways to, you know, ensure that the town's investment reflects that declaration while being responsive to tertiary concerns as well. The seven to twelve percent came out of a discussion with our financial advisor, personal economic lawyer. Um, where they advised that that was an appropriate allocation to be able to meet the town's goals for sustainability while giving them something to work with to make advantageous allocation.
And sorry, since the beginning, you said certainly that you're following.
Um, there was a declaration of a climate emergency that last year. So in a lot of the discussions that we have, we think about our decision to impact that declaration and for this conversation started. So. The rate of return goals are unchanged. There are. Essentially, that was why seven twelve percent was identified was, you know, it was advised that hundred percent power wouldn't be appropriate because there are segments in the law that you're done this with P S B fund, whereas seven twelve percent is was advised to us as being appropriate allocation to be directed while not jeopardizing ability to some ice for parents.
Any more questions? Hearing none. Um, we'll call article thirty-four. We'll go. All those in favor? Any opposition? Article thirty-four passes. Article thirty-five. See if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to establish a new debt service operating reserve account. The let the select board should be authorized to use funds appropriated to the debt service operating reserve account to meet the goal of minimizing year-to-year fluctuations in debt service expense and utilizing pro-rata allocation of net interest dividends within the town reserve investment portfolio subsidize future debt service payments. Savior may not be used for debt service attributable attributable to enterprise banks. Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article thirty-five passes. Article thirty-six, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to transfer the balance held in the police training cost reserve account four oh, three dash two four four seven three, the police capital improvement reserve account four oh, four oh, one hundred dash two four four oh five. Any questions or discussion? Call it to a vote or all those in favor of article thirty-six? All those opposed? Article thirty-seven, see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to transfer the balance held in the assessment capital improvement reserve account four oh, two oh, six hundred dash two four two oh eight to the special revaluation reserve account four oh, two oh, six hundred dash two four two oh seven. The vision server was the only instead assigned to the assessment capital of pre-reserve, which is no longer needed due to cloud hosted serve. The balance of the assessment capital improvement reserve as of January thirtieth, nineteen eighty-three was eight thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. The actual transfer amount differ may not subsequent pro-rata application allocation of portfolio performance. Any questions? Article thirty-eight, this is another long one. Yeah. Oh, we did. I just assumed. All those opposed? This is more legitimate. I'm just deciding. Article thirty-eight. So the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue a general obligation bond or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to pay for professional technical services, including but not necessarily limited to topographical survey, design permitting and bidding services for improvements to portions of the town sidewalks and curvings with all sidewalk locations totaling approximately three thousand one hundred and sixty feet and collectively referred to as and further to authorize the select board or its designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note of the town, which may be callable and accomplish the project. Said improvements shall include the following segments, see section F pages sixty sixty-two for math and window project area. Questions, queries? All those in favor are article thirty-eight? All opposed? Article thirty-nine. So the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue a general obligation bond or note for the town in a principal amount not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand dollars to pay for professional technical and construction services, including but not necessarily limited to site survey, design bidding and construction services for renovations of the two existing town home tennis and table ball courts. Courts with said renovation to provide two fully functional tennis and pickleball courts and further to authorize the selectmen or its designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note of the town, which may be callable and to accomplish renovation projects, see appendix G page sixty-three for that. Any questions or queries? None heard. Call article twenty-nine. Thirty-nine to vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let's do number forty. All those in favor. Without a convenient reading. So the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue a general obligation bond or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to pay for professional and technical construction services, including but not necessarily limited to topographical survey, design permitting, bidding service and construction for improvements to three existing town home parking lots. And further to authorize the board of selectmen or its designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to accomplish the project. Two of the three parking lots are identified as one, the paved town of Cranberry Island, these blocks otherly of the town office two, the paved town office lower level parking lot adjacent to the police and fire departments as to which said parking lots said improvements shall include but not necessarily limited to reclaiming existing paved surfaces replacing the existing traffic controls with new ones and installing new L E D dark sky complaining lighting and constructing surfer modern dent dent drainage improvement. Would you like me to read the third parking lot or would you like me to stop? Oh, we got both. Keep reading it. We gotta do it. Only takes one keep reading. Sir, said parking lot is identified as the gravel parking lot located in the village of Seal Harbor, access off main route, the route three main street north of the access driveway to the village of Seal Harbor wastewater treatment plant as to which third said parking lot said improvements shall include removing existing soil material from the dark over in the lot and replacing it with new soil material used in roadway and parking lot construction. Drainage improvements and lighting. In all three of said parking lots, said improvements shall include the construction of new base and surface layers of lighted mist concrete pavement and other associated were typically recognized by the industry to completely end of the project and further to authorize the selectmen or its designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note of the town, which may be callable to accomplish the project. Any questions? Yeah, Paul. Yep, Paul?
Remember, you know, from the.
Okay. Just respond.
Four, uh, there is a view, view of that. There is. You're familiar with which lot this is, that you're talking about those in Seal Harbor, I'm assuming. Three, the one that's the part of, is this a lot of thing that you think it is? So that'll be part of the work that we do, determining, I don't, I don't know the history of it myself. Or. We have. Right. So, we are going to have to bear in mind work at this lot in particular to understand the, the state of it as well. I, I don't know what is there, but that's part of the process, determining if there is anything that is hazardous, having to go forward. Why, maybe this will, but we. Also, that, uh, we had, we had entered into the. Off the, run out of this, then we can license and find.
That's a different lot.
Not a very lot.
Yes. Are you, the lot you're thinking of, or you said the Jordans?
Yeah.
And that's actually, that's actually closer, it's farther up the road. There are some settling tanks there and there was some work done by DOT and there is an outfall that has been putting one off, my family, so that, that's a different lot than what this is. That's a little farther up the range. Short time. A little, so I think, I think this is different than that. This is closer to the wastewater treatment plant. Yeah.
Yeah, available. For this.
Yes. This is the other one, you're having. Is the. Well, yeah, I'll look into the, whether or not there's any nation on this site that is remediated. That I can get to it, but as far as the one that has one off that goes to the park, that, that's a different lot than this. All right. Okay. All right.
So the seven hundred eighty thousand is just for permitting and bidding now, and on certain, and it's not any construction cost.
Yeah, it's right up. It's also grant first here. No, there's, there's construction included in that.
So then.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing them, let's call Article forty to the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article forty passes. Article forty-one. So the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bond or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars to pay for professional and construction services, including but not less necessarily limited to tropical, topographic survey, design permitting visiting, bidding services and constructing the relocation of a portion of the town, sanitary sewer infrastructure consisting of approximately one hundred feet of sanitary sewer pipe panel and associated purposes to complete the relocation work project in general performance within dispute standards of approach work and to further authorize select or its designated designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond of the town, which may be callable until accomplished project. I mean, if you where the works is located? Yes, you do. Only one guy has to make it to get to here. Said work is located in the village of Somerville, within the main department of transportation, right of way of state room three, that one ninety-eight, and said rule of relocation shall be in accordance with the M D O T requirement to do so at the town's expense, all in conjunction with section thirteen of the M D O T utility accommodation rules seventeen that two nine, chapter two ten, covering bridges and other highway structures. Said rules stating that if there is a conflict between the location of infrastructure of the town that was previously authorized by the M D O T to construct and did construct and the anticipated destruction of new bridge structure by the M D O T that goes itself through, specifically replacing the existing bridge located in state three, open ninety-eight, that convey, conveys various modes of traffic across Pittsburgh, including vehicular cycling and foot track for the new bridge, the same general location of the existing bridge. Then the previously authorized infrastructure must be relocated at the town's expense. Said bridge replacement construction activities are tentatively scheduled in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, but if said bridge replacement construction activities are delayed, then the project described in this article should also also be delayed. See if any, uh, page sixty-seven for that. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article forty-one passes. Article forty-two. So the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bonds or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finance construction, contract administration, inspection and construction services associated with drainage improvements to the Bechill Cross Road in the general area where Dennis Brook Road is under Bechill Cross Road. Said improvements will be in performance with the main department of environmental protection, steam smart program refinements and with said replays to include, but not necessarily be limited to, replacing the two corroded metal pipes with a concrete box cover, placing stone riprap for stabilization and erosion control on the embankments on both sides. Directing gargles on the top of the embankments on both sides of the road and placing earth and fill, loam and seed in the area and other amenities and impurities required to complete the improvements and further to authorize the select order as designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note of the town, which may be callable and to accomplish the project. Any discussion? Yep. Okay. Any more discussion?
Slide.
It came up, we didn't get around it, or they closed the one in. Yeah. You. Yeah. It's.
We didn't vote on last year with a different funding source, but very formal. They voted on last year with a different funding source, and the third, which is a market derived source. Obviously, last year was not great for markets and. So, nine hundred dollars, that would be not, how many dollars? Four and five.
The amount did not change. But nothing has been spent other than the grant funds that we received for this project. We received the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this project through M D O T. No town funds have been.
But the, the.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the compit is, is essentially out of the way of looking at this as a better funding mechanism. If this would fail, I could be, the funding authority would, would save it, and if there was still viable to looking this as better. Any other questions? While the Article forty due to vote, all in favor? All opposed? The eyes carry, said. What is that? Article forty-three, shall the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bonds or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finance construction related services, including but not necessarily limited to construction contract administration, inspection and construction services associated with improvements and reverses of approximately fifty linear feet, linear speed of erosion in the Seal Harbor beach shoreline eroded by a strong storm version twenty twenty. Said damage area located in the northeast fifty portion of the water of Seal Harbor first day and located in general down over the embankment, but the steamboat were thrown. The said improvements and reverses include, but not necessarily be limited to placing geotextile, anchor holders, stone riprap, earth and fill, loam and seed and other amenities and purposes required to complete the improvements and repair. And further to authorize the select order its designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note by the town, which may be callable and to accomplish the project, see if any, K, page sixty-eight for that. Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article forty-three passes. Article forty-four. See if the inhabitants of town amount of desert will vote to authorize this select board to accept and expend the bead with them additional state, federal and other funds, including Gibson grants, as well as funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act and similar legislation received during the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for town purposes, provided that such official funds do not require the expenditure of local funds not previously appropriate. Any questions or commentary? All is in favor of Article forty-four? All those opposed? Article forty-four passes. Article forty-five. We're halfway through. Article forty-five, see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to approve July first. Each year is the date in which all taxes will be due and payable, providing that all unpaid taxes in September point of each year shall be charged interest at an annual rate of eight percent per year. Taxable members are exempt within the terms and conditions of the town's tax bill agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor are Article forty-five? All those opposed? Article forty-five passes under it. Article forty-six. See if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the tax collector who adhered with standard agreement of agreement on the taxpayers whereby one of the taxpayer agrees to the base specified monthly payments to the town based on the taxpayer's estimated and actual tax obligations for the current year, uh, current year property taxes, real estate and or personal, the town agreed to waive interest on timely payment. Three, the town authorized the tax collector to take payment of tax, of taxes prior to commitment of taxes. Four, the agreement automatically terminates if two consecutive payments are missed and the taxpayer there from the year will become subject to paid due date and interest rate as non-participating tax. Five, only taxpayers who are, who are paid in full in their property tax obligations may participate. And six, interested taxpayers will apply annually for participation by the date shown on the application, date and application format to be determined by the tax collector. Any discussion? Article forty-six passes under it. Article forty-seven. God, that is. Those rights. All those in favor? What do you know? And all those opposed? Article forty-six passes. Article forty-seven, see if the town will, never let me do this. Article forty-seven, see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept remayment of property taxes, not get committed, not to exceed the estimated amount to be committed in subsequent year, with no interest to be paid on same. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I think we should vote. All those in favor of Article forty-seven is written? All those opposed? Article forty-seven passes. Article forty-eight, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town for evading taxes that have been paid off at the rate of four percent per year. Who'd have somebody do that? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposition? Article forty-eight passes. Article forty, see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize expenditures to pay any tax payments granted by the assessor, board of assessment review or select board, together with any interest due there from there on from the town during the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, in an aggregate amount not to exceed the property tax commitment overlay. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Any opposition? Article forty-nine passes. Article fifty, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the select board to propose by public bid of town owned property other than real property with a value of thirty thousand dollars or less under such terms and conditions as it deems advisable. Any discussion? Article fifty goes to a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? Article fifty passes. Article fifty-one. Player sees you all sneaking off. And if we run out of a corner, we have to stop and that means we have to do this again another night. I don't have a count, but hundred fifty and then we have to quit. So if you could possibly stay, if you go out and for stroll, come back, you can stay even the building. But we really need you to stay again. Fifty-two. It is, it is starting a little, see, there's two going. I'm sorry, you still getting. Thank you. As far as I know, we only ever get to answer this. Article fifty-one. See if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the language to sell it. Or to, to convey titles obtained under tax fees and other fees and conveyance to the inhabitants of the town. Any land or buildings in future treatment in lieu of payment of taxes has the power to authorize redemption. Municipal officers shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six M R S nine four three dash fee for qualifying who's that property of the accused to collect payment other than the former owners. Any discussion of Article fifty-one? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article fifty-one passes. Article fifty-two. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the select board to contract their services in amounts not to exceed appropriation for same under such terms and conditions as deemed, it deemed advisable. Any discussion of Article fifty-two? All those in favor of Article fifty-two is written? All those opposed? Article fifty-two passes. Article fifty-three, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to transfer seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance account, number one hundred three eight three oh oh, to reduce twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tax commitment. Any discussion about this? All those in, oh, Wanda, anyone? Sorry?
Why did we remember after that?
Let's, let's see. My best to give a simple answer, there's a lot of. So the last audited, uh, end of second fund balance, six thirty, one point two, a three point six four million. Essentially, what these articles do is create a budgetary deficit going into tax commitment. Over the lifetime of doing this, every year we say five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, and we don't get anywhere near, uh, touching that. We end up all the time actually adding to surplus. And so, baking in the seven hundred thousand that's approved at last meeting, it's basically the twenty twenty-three tax commitment. And then this with, you know, expected, and such, uh, expecting some. And then this with, you know, expected and such, uh, expecting somewhere around two points, five to three million dollars at the end of this year, one point four, after the number of standard, uh, financial that we can see. Uh, it's, I'm sorry, I've commented. Long story short, we talk about this year after year after year after year, and the goal will been established for a long time. We've blown past it every single year. You go back and look at the twenty seventeen, I mean, for example, it was part of that point. Given the budget deficit that was established at that time was about three point seven ninety dollars, and we're at a million over that now. And the target is to keep somewhere between ten and twelve percent of our budget in undersigned fund rounds, and right now we're sitting at sixteen, seventeen percent, so we'll roll up that.
Thank you.
For help.
Any further questions? All those in favor of passage fifty-three? Article fifty-three. All those opposed? Article fifty-three passes. Article fifty-four. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the select board to transfer up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the capital gain preserve account four hundred dash two four two dash oh two to reduce the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tax commitment. The exact amount is limited by the aforementioned maximum value shall be determined by the select board in highly assessment of current and expected market conditions. Any questions, queries? Hearing none? All those in favor of article fifty-four? All those opposed? Article fifty-four passes. Article fifty-five. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and or appropriate as revenue through excise, taxes, service fees, and miscellaneous sources for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four town budget. So the figure is one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Any discussion or questions about this? Hearing none? Article fifty-five can go to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article fifty-five passes. Article fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. A man previously approved appropriations. You guys can go through. Article fifty-six. See if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to ratify the overdraft that occurred in public for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Said overage was primarily caused by expenditures in Department five fifteen waste management exceeding budget expectations by forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-two cents, and Department five two zero buildings and ground exceeding budgeted expectations by eighteen thousand, forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. The overdraft charged the undesigned fund balance. Total appropriations for Departments five oh one, five fifteen, five twenty, five eleven, and five thirty, high waste, waste management, buildings and ground, parks, cemeteries, and environmental sustainability for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two were two million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The total expenditures recognized said this year amount was two million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and thirty-seven cents.
He's going to explain it. So after finalizing of this article, there was an audit adjustment for fiscal year five point two that reduced the amount of overage from forty-two thousand, three, down to thirty-five thousand, three sixty-four, point thirty-six. So I'll be recommending that we amend the overage to ratify one forty-two thousand, one eight three point thirty-seven to be thirty-five thousand, three sixty-four, thirty-six.
Who would like to recommend passage to the article, other, the, like to amend the articles and read a figure of thirty-five, six, three six four, thirty-six as explained? Do you want more explanation of what this means? Any other questions? No, this is the amendment right now. We're just talking about the amendment. Any questions about the amendment? All those amending article fifty-six to read exactly the same except for a number thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four point thirty-six instead of forty-two, one eight three thirty-seven. All those in favor? All those opposed? Now we go backwards to the main amendment. It's a little convoluted. The main amendment now reads with its amendments, see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert vote to ratify the overdraft that occurred in public for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. And then the rest of the language is exactly the same. Any discussion about the main amendment? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article fifty-six passes as amended. Article fifty-seven. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to ratify the overdraft that occurred in debt service for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and nine cents. The overdraft was charged for the undesigned fund balance. Said overdraft was caused by actual interest on certain debt service payments exceeding budgeted expectations. Total appropriations for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for Department eight oh one debt service were one million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand and fifty dollars, and total expenditures recognized said this year on one hundred and eighty-six, eighty, one hundred, one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and nine cents. Any discussion or comments about article fifty-seven? Hearing none? All in favor of passage of article fifty-seven? All those opposed? Article fifty-seven passes. Article fifty-eight. See if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to amend appropriations for Department eight oh one debt service within the general operating fund for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, from one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to one million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. The difference in original and revised appropriations will be charged to the undesigned fund balance, subject to the actual variances in unended activity. Such amendment in appropriations is necessitated primarily by the difference in interest expense budgeted for and actually incurred for bond theories, twenty eighteen loan projects. Any more discussion? New discussion, any questions? All hearing none? All in favor of article fifty-eight passing has written? All those opposed? Article fifty-eight passes under it. Article fifty-nine. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department two hundred through two twenty-one, general government, governing body, select management, municipal management, town clerk, registrar, elections, planning board, finance threat service, tax collector, assessment, code enforcement, undelegated funds, human resources, technology, and contracted mineral and community-oriented services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Would you like me to read how much each body gets? Or we, sorry to pass it. No one objects? All right. Any discussion of this?
Do you remember where we went last year? Just had. So last year, uh, the total was one nine five hundred and forty-one thousand, one forty-six. Uh, one of that is the, the community oriented, uh, services line that's early one quarter and three thousand was in a different part of the budget last year, so the increase would be, uh, negated by that.
So does that answer your question? All right. All right. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of article fifty-nine passing? All those opposed? Article fifty-nine passes. Article sixty. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department three hundred general assistance support for the twenty twenty-three, twenty Any discussion of article sixteen? Yeah. Careful with this. Anybody that comes in and needs help in terms of, is there, or that's the general support? Because we have no more questions. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article sixty passes as written. Article sixty-one. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department three fifty rural waste management for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four All right. Any discussion of article sixty-one? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article sixty-one passes. Articles. Article sixty-two. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department four oh six street light for the twenty twenty-three, twenty Any questions and discussion about the street light thing? All of the town's street lights are, all the street lights in town are by the town. These are already there. This is just to change the light bulb over here. For the electricity, the light bulb never. But we're on you. It's just for the rest. Any other questions? All those in favor of article sixty-two has written? All those opposed? Article sixty-two passes. Article sixty-three. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department four oh one, four oh five, four oh seven, and four oh eight. Public safety, police, shellfish, animal patrol, and communications dispatch for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four town budget. Any questions or queries or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of passage of article sixty-three has written? All those opposed? Article sixty-three passes. Article sixty-four. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department four oh three, four oh four, and four oh nine, public safety, fire department, hydrants, and emergency management for twenty twenty-three and twenty Any discussion of article sixty-four? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article sixty-four passes as written. Article sixty-five. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department five oh one, five fifteen, five twenty, and five twenty-five. Public works, road, waste management, buildings and ground, parks and cemeteries, and five thirty, environmental sustainability for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Any discussion of article sixty-five, sixty-four? Sixty-five? Sixty-five? Hearing none? Call article sixty-five to vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article sixty-five passes. Article sixty-six. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department five oh five, and five oh six, and two, where his waste management for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four town budget. Can you guys hear those numbers? Any discussion? All those in favor passing article sixty-six? All those opposed? Article sixty-six passes. Article sixty-seven. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department six oh five recreation, public pool, utilities, maintenance for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four town budget. Any discussion of that? Hearing none? All those in favor of passage of article sixty-seven? All those opposed? Article sixty-eight. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department seven oh one economic community development for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four town budget. Any questions or discussion? Wants to answer the economic community development. Durlin's gonna take it up.
That's the group's charge and responsibility of looking at the community and seeing what perhaps can be done to enhance its viability. Of recent, the ten thousand dollars last year, we expended part of that in a survey for broadband study to try to determine the few remaining areas in the town of Mount Desert that are not contracted for broadband service at this point. We intend to find thirty-four properties at this point. So that funding came from that particular fund. Now this year, we've got ten thousand dollars in there again. We do not have an earmark for anything because we don't know what may pop up. So that is there in case we do do something like hire an consultant to study some other projects similar to that one that we undertook with broadband last year. Any other questions?
Hearing none? We'll call article sixty-eight to the vote. All those in favor of passage of article sixty-eight? All those opposed? Article sixty-eight passes. Article sixty-nine. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department eight oh one debt service for the twenty twenty-three, twenty So you guys can all hear the figures being read out back there? Any discussion? All those in favor of passage of article sixty-nine? All those opposed? Article sixty-nine passes. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department eight five one third-party request agencies for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four town budget. Village organizations, recreation. Village organizations, recreation, and public social services agencies, and historical museums. Do I have a motion? Any discussion or amendments? You have a question, go ahead. The difference is to make up for what was removed from some of their party requests. And in order, can you just put it back in there? I can't remember the specific groups that were involved. We can, we can talk more about. Anybody second? We're discussing the amendment to raise. To raise it to two hundred and two thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars. Any more discussion about this? Yep, go ahead.
I can't think of any of this group thinking that the nursery school needs a decrease in the request. If anything, we should be giving them more money because they do such a great job with all of our children. Some of those first alumni. Yes, these kids, who doesn't love them? Who doesn't need a family of people they always need? And the Chamber of Commerce, and it worked with the Chamber of Commerce. All of the Chamber of Commerce, all of us in this community, especially. So, for that reason, I need to be a leader tonight. So, that twenty two thousand dollars, that's.
Okay, so, here we are to do this by fall here. And for this, I'm a lot of committee for tuning. And I've seen what last, okay, two decades. I've seen this amount decline steadily every year. And this year, we got a couple of big requests, twenty thousand dollars here. Thirty, forty thousand dollars there. And at some point, you know, we had to stop slide because the words out, I'm visiting, it's default. Okay, that was a small amount of money, but principle is there. Principle is that we're here to safeguard you. And one of the ways you can do that is by looking at the requests and saying, hey, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Here's ten. Better, seems pretty reasonable. Maybe you need some of the windows issue, maybe come back next year for ten thousand. It's just fiscal responsibility. And if you want to keep going. Access to power or someone's could concede these. But if you want to buy into that, that's fine. But that's why we didn't try to attack you.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, we're voting still on amending this to be two hundred and two thousand. No more questions or comments? Right, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor of voting on the amendment to change the figure from one eighty to four three seven to two oh two four three seven, please say aye. All those opposed? One more time with the ayes. All those in favor, one more time? All those opposed? The ayes happen, if anyone puts a hand down, we're happy to do. But someone has to, Jeff Jenkins has to ask. Otherwise. Right, well, you're left, is anybody willing to second? Alright, you can do a hand count. Everyone can vote. We're voting on the amendment to change the figure from one eighty. One eighty, one hundred and eight thousand four hundred and thirty seven to two hundred to two thousand four hundred and thirty seven. Then we get to vote again on the main article. So, we'll be twice. Hand count, who's those people with blue cards? Alright, all those in favor, please raise your blue card. Any? Okay. They're done, you can put them down. All those opposed? Raise your blue cards. They're not counting, you can put your card down. Alright, results are to vote on the amendment, forty seven yes, twenty no's. So, the amendment is now accepted and voted in, Article seven now reads as amended. Is there any more discussion on Article seventy? Yeah. There, that's, you're supposed to make that page down. If you've been on the work committee, she would have convinced you already. Okay, so, the amendment's accepted, and we're discussing the main motion, there's amended, is there any more comment or questions? All those in favor of Article seventy as amended, please say aye. All those opposed to Article seventy as amended, please say nay. I think it's fairly obvious the. So, I would say that Article seventy passes. Article seventy one, to see what's on the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for department nine nine one capital improvement plan transfers for the twenty twenty three twenty twenty four town budget. Is there a? Any discussion of Article seventy one? Hearing none, Article seventy one can go with the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article seventy one passes. See if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to increase the property tax letting limit by five, six, five, seven, seven, five, and we zero zero. Is there a? The work committee is recommending a pass article, which means that this article will be passed over, no action will be taken on it, and it basically disappears. Explanation.
Lawyer, yeah. The L D one calculation is a very complicated calculation. We started at the beginning of the budget process, brought it forward with this figure, but upon legal review, we had made a mistake in the calculation. So, legally, we do not need to vote on everyone. You have to, you're raising for the municipal appropriation is under the L D one cap. Impactful, it was horrible, unneeded. Because we don't.
Any other questions? Alright, I don't think we have to vote, pass, let me explain it, go. It's been passed. Passed over. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to ratify the select boards approval of the Marina proprietary money budget. Discussion? Say whether or not we're gonna.
The Marina Intermodal Fund is one of the. They, they basically create their own budget and generate their own. It's just a show, it's a display of their high, that's what I'm saying. They spent this year in revenue, they took in eighty over fifty two thousand and eighty dollars, and they had eight hundred fifty two dollars in spend, so basically, it was awesome.
Yes, we do, but. Alright, that's what this is for. All those in favor of ratifying Article seventy three, please say aye. All those opposed? Article seventy three is ratified. We're into elementary school appropriations. And there will be a change when we get to the expenditure end of it. And we, where do they see this? In Article eighty nine, at the end, we have to change. This is just a form of warning. The amount, then articles are listed wrong because we removed an article from a warrant. So, on the last page of the warrant, it said, Article eighty nine says seventy five through eighty nine, and it should read seventy four through eighty eight. So, we'll start. Seventy four through eighty four authorized expenditures in both centers. Article seventy four, see what some of the board will be authorized to expend for regular instruction for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty three amount was not one million nine hundred eighty five thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars.
And second.
Any discussion of Article seventy four? Hearing none, all those in favor of passage of Article seventy four as written? All those opposed? Article seventy four passed. Article seventy five, to see what's on the board, the school board will be authorized to expend for special education for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three amount was seven hundred and eighty four thousand seven hundred and seven thirty three dollars. Any discussion of Article seventy five? All those in favor of Articles, passage of Article seventy five, please say aye. All those opposed? Article seventy five passes. Article seventy six, to see what's from the school board will be authorized to expend for career and technical education for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three amount was zero. Any discussion? All those in favor of passage, passage of Article seventy six, please say aye. All those opposed? Article seventy six passes. Article seventy seven, to see what's on the school board will be authorized to expend for other instruction for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three amount was ninety five thousand nine. Any discussion of Article seventy seven? All those in favor? Sorry. You can probably tell, it's not, you can hear if you talk that way.
Their instruction is the co-curricular, the path logistics, and then the regular summer school is included in our description.
Any other questions? All those in favor of passage of Article seventy seven? All those opposed? Article seventy seven passes. Article seventy eight, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for student staff support for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion? Yep. I could read that to you. Twenty twenty two, twenty three amount was five, five hundred and forty four thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars. Alright, Article seventy eight is open for discussion. Any questions, queries? After? Hearing none? I'm sorry?
Students, the passing of course, moves like a health services, technology, library, maybe improvement of instruction, like curriculum work, that type of thing, a lot of.
Okay, so, Excel, tech, library. What was the fourth one, Nancy? Yep, any other questions? All those in favor of passage of Article seventy eight? All those opposed? Article seventy eight passes as written. Article seventy nine, to see what's on the school board will be authorized to expend for system administration for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three amount was one hundred nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy three dollars. Any discussion about Article 79? All those in favor of passage of Article 79? All those opposed? Hearing none, Article 79 passes. Article 80, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for school administrator for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. The 222-23 amount was $270,096. Any questions or queries?
What's the $50,000 difference for this year?
You know, but the difference for the $50,000 difference in this year, anybody?
Increase in position After number weeks Regular salary
So, regular salary, you hear it? Okay. Any other questions? There was somebody else, please say. All those in favor of Article 80 is written? All those opposed? Article 81, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. Somebody can say that. Any discussion or questions about Article 81? Why was there such a big increase last year?
It was salary and benefits increase, and then also fuel for the
You hear it? Salary and benefits and fuel for the buses. Alright, any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article 81 passes. Article 82, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. The 2023-2023 amount was $595,868. Any questions? Yep.
Why is that a huge increase?
Nancy will stand up and tell them.
So, thanks for your superintendent. So that increase, that increases due to the capital management debt service where the, where the school was paid off last year. And the school board is utilizing those funds to keep up the school. There are some needs that is planned on the info sheet on the backside. You will see the information of what projects, so that the school doesn't fall behind. We have other schools in the district that are utilizing their debt service as a way to keep up the school, so that we don't have highs and lows within your budget to make sure that the school is properly taken care of.
Any other questions?
So the difference between the debt service, because the net article is $285,000, but the difference between the $595,868 and the $932,971 is closer to $350,000.
Yep, and when we get to that, we'll need an explanation.
So I'm just wondering, the extra $100,000? He just said there
You mean the extra $100,000 between 932 and 85?
We know that.
The difference?
The difference between $595,868 and $932,971. Unfortunately, the United States didn't print it, but the difference was, but that's roughly $350,000. And then they took away $285,000 because the board is recommending zero. So there's still an extra $70,000 remaining.
Can you make a claim about the, the certicum, and we can deal with it if we need it.
The salaries, benefits, trustee, heated.
Question. Looking at articles that have been appearing in the island in regard to all kinds of changes in the school, are there things in this roughly $300,000 add-on that would be absolutely obsolete by NBI Elementary being folded into something else?
It's quite unfortunate that these are being fixed and need to be done now, and not be affected by things being rolled in. And then, the work committee discussed, we had this all year. The answer was theater Dixon, evidently, what near United Oh, and Brian's going to explain it even better.
Public Works Director, but I'm also the Chair of the P S School Committee, so what we're doing is a kind of a phased approach, so we have the first phase where we hire the architects, and we're doing activities right now towards this, that was, we need to re-put the budget last year. What we're paying for out of that $85,000, a portion of that, $60,000 towards the technical services for this upcoming fiscal year. And what we do is to look at the suite of things that we need to do, until the building is repaired for maintenance, and prioritize those such that we're not doing things that we should be waiting for. You know, the answer to those questions down the road. If the building were to change use, we have plenty of time, we kind of bake that into the process, that we're going to do those things that make sense, and we're able to sub building use first, and then prioritize those that might make sense depending upon building use as later in the project. So that we're, we're taking into account the timing that is a different use of them. The hell?
Any other questions for, for anyone who knows of amendments?
Yeah, confused.
Seems to me that folks are saying here, we paid off
Can you duck up a little? Duck left. Right.
He's proceeding $85,000. That's not, it's terrible. Could never have been any higher than this, so, you're saying that. For real, we're reading The symbol is man, this is in fact the difference between the $55,000 and $932,000.
Right, we're not doing Article 83 at all. Right, so you're Right, I mean, right now, you're doing, it's 82 still. When we get to the next article, you should say that again. Any other questions about Article 82? Alright, hearing none, all in favor of Article 82, please say aye. All those opposed? Article 82 passes. Article 83, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. The 2022-23-23 amount was $285,154. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 83, please say aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Article 83 passes. Article 84, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for all other expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. 2022-2023 amount was $75,000. The work committee is recommending $75,000. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Article 84 passes. The next few articles, raise the funds that you just authorized them to expend. So, handphone is required for the articles. There's three handphones coming up. Keep your blue cards, and voting for the ballot, we've got to go through. Article 85, to see what some of the voters of the town of Mount Desert will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, recommend, they recommended $202,9710. And to see what some of the voters of Mount Desert will raise as the town contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, in accordance with the May Repeal Statute Title 20 Dad Day Section 5688 for the period July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. Alright, any questions? Go ahead. Because the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act requires that they save in page 12. It's just in the law. It's been there for five or six years. Then we've been doing this. Yep, and it's just the way the people determine, the thing has to be read. I actually knew it. Any other questions? All those in favor of Article 85, please raise your blue cards. And all those opposed to Article 85? Seeing none. Article 85 passes, and the count was 74 ayes. This may be a standing record, but it's 51 ayes. And we also have to have a hand count, it would be no more than as high now that everybody's Hand count is prepared for Article 68. Article 68, to see, to see what some, two of them, to see what some of the voters of the town of Mount Desert will raise and appropriate for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state funded school construction project, non-state funded portions of school construction programs, and minor capital projects in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the amount of desert contribution to the total, total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for the period July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. And the recommendation is? There any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. And somebody made a vote. All those opposed to Article 86? Seeing none, Article 6 passes, and the vote of 71 ayes to zero. Alright, next one, written ballot, oh, this is the written, this is where you all get to walk the group. And no speaking out the back door, you've seen that one many times. Article 87, to see what some of the board of the town of Desert will raise and appropriate an additional to local funds for school purpose, recommended $2,587,458 for the period July 1st, 2023 and ending July 30th, 2024, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by $2,587,458 as required to fund the budget recommended by the school. The work committee is recommending the figure you need to spread. Needed and seconded. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your blue card. There are all those in favor and opposed, my dear Can you make this? Do you make this? It's big range. Ah, did anybody even want to take a vote? Well, they're gonna turn, do I need it? Hope to you. I'll just tally everything. And verify the tallies. Finished, finished, forty, fifty-four. I'll be the senator. Article eighty-seven passes by a vote of seventy-eight to nation. That will, uh, our hand card is prepared for article eighty-eight. See what's, to see what some of the voters of the town of Mount Desert will authorize the school board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for the town's contribution. To the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the essential programs and services funding act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes. Title twenty dash A, section one five six nine zero, unexpendable balance, tuition receipts, state subsidy and other receipts for the support of school. The twenty twenty-two, twenty-three total budget was four million, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-six dollars. So that's a figure of five million, two hundred and four thousand, ninety hundred and eighty-four dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, passage of article eighty-eight. This is the hand card, so you gotta hold your cards up again. All those opposed? Yeah, there's no sense keeping your cards, they're gonna change the color next week. Take the moment, write notes on them. Any opposed? Sixty-nine to nothing, article eighty-eight passes. Article eighty-nine, we're gonna have to amend this because of a type of a change in the warrant. We're gonna read it as written and then we'll amend it and then we'll go back. Um, in addition to the amount in article seventy, seventy-five or eighty-nine, shall the school board be authorized to spend such other sums as may be received from state or federal grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For school purchases provided that such branch, programs or other source cannot require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated. Current year total is two hundred and three million and seventy-nine dollars. Two hundred and three thousand. Any discussion now that we got the here cut back with? All right, so you had. Anything anybody might say to you? All right, the amendment we're talking, we're gonna talk about is to change the wording from seventy, from article seventy-four, eighty-eight. Do you require me to read the whole paragraph with the proper word? Think so. Any discussion about the change? All of, all those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed to the amendment, please say. Full article written, in addition to the amount in article seventy-four, eighty-eight, shall the school board be authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from state or federal grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? Well, any discussion of the amended main article? All of the favor of the main article? All those opposed? Hearing none, I say article eighty-nine passes. That could be the end of the warrant article. And I agree. Entertained and moved to adjourn? Hurry to make a game. You should run now while you get a chance to get the position.